Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, this is a nice crowd. Oh, must be Christmas time. Merry Christmas, everyone. This is our forty-ninth meeting of the year. Okay. It's Thursday, December tenth, at approximately ten oh eight A M. Officially want to welcome everyone here. And for public comments, we have uh some honors that we have to give away this morning. And um some recognitions. And Carol, Dave, I think we'll we'll get right into it. We have some wonderful people here um that we're gonna be recognizing uh for many, many years of service that they've given of their lives uh to Mahoney County. And they provided excellent yeoman service on behalf of the Mahoney County Commissioners. They served as our attorneys, they've served as prosecutors. They've just done a magnificent job. Uh they have such excellent information, background information uh for all the work that they've done helping us on so many issues, I can't even really get into it, but the lawyers understand uh what we deal with every day. So today in our midst, you are going to be honoring. We have Lynette Stratford. Lynette, would you stand up?
Thank you.
And Lynette, you were uh Chief of the Civil Division for how many years?
Uh well, Chief Assistant, but that's to clarify. So I was Chief of the Civil Division uh ninety-nine. And then I became Chief Assistant in twenty-eleven. Thirty-one years I've been at the Prosecutors Office.
Thank you for always being there and being on call and uh giving us the best listening that you had. It helps us do a lot of different advocates. We thank you for that. We also have a gentleman that I've known for a very, very long time. Back to my Jim Trappin days. And that's uh Nicky Mottarelli. Nicky, you served in, my gosh, I don't know how many roles. I'm gonna turn it over to you and you you tell us.
Well, I had uh I served under four prosecutors. I was a juvenile prosecutor under uh Gary Van Brocklin. Chief Assistant Prosecutor for the Civil Division under Jim Filomena. And twenty-seven years with Paul Gaines and two years with Gina. So it comes out to thirty-five years total. That was after twelve years of the Youngstown Police Department. So it's fifty in private practice.
Were you with Paul Gaines' police officers at some point together? Did he went to law school? And will you tell me that story?
Fifty-one years altogether.
Thank you for everything, honestly.
You're welcome.
You've always worked for
It's been an interesting ride. A lot of different things.
Well, thank you for your service. We have something we're gonna be giving to you on Lynette here. And then, of course, we have Tim Tousick. Another gentleman that I've known a very long time and his family forever. Timmy? And Tim, I'm gonna turn it over to you to tell you uh your your background.
Nineteen eighty-five was when I started with the Prosecutor's Office with Gary Van Brocklin. Came in, I was a young kid at that point. Uh was given a desk from the attorney who had it before. But basically called that me and one other person were gonna be the Civil Division. And um had literally no idea what I was doing at that point. And somehow just worked day and night in here on weekends, at night on weekends. You wouldn't believe how dark this courthouse could get at night on a weekend, especially when the power goes out. I experienced that on one occasion. I worked for Van Brocklin. Was out for a little while when Filomena came in, but I continued to work for the Board of Health because I was handling the BFI case at that point. And that case was heading up to the Supreme Court. And Board of Health retained me to uh to continue to represent them on that. Then after a year and a half, I came back under Filomena's administration. I continued to represent the Solid Waste District, which was newly created that time. The Board of Health set up hazmat. Uh was involved with the formation of the lead program that Phil career has been with for for years now. And um stayed on with Paul Gaines and worked with Gina for for a couple of years here. And altogether, it comes out to about forty minus one and a half. So I guess that's three and a half.
And Tim, you helped us immensely on those host agreements on the Green Team. Uh when I was elected Commissioner, you laid everything out. You've explained everything to me and it was complicated and I want to thank you for all that hard work that you did with those landfill issues.
You're welcome. It's it was it was an exciting experience doing, taking care of that. And especially something that significant, because I I those host agreements mean a lot to this county still.
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And we both have a common denominator
Yes, we do.
in our lives.
Yes.
It's Uncle George.
Absolutely.
And I had to mention George.
I'm sure he's loving it right now that
Merry Christmas parties he'd have with the Serbians.
Yeah, the Serbian Freedom Fighter. Because Anthony and I knew each other back when we were kids, because my uncle and his dad were really, really good friends.
I remember when Uncle George tore the uh gear off the pig that he had on his spit and he handed it to me. You should have met this guy. One of one one of a kind. One of a kind. He could take your head off at two thousand yards without a scope. He was that style of guy with hunting and everything. But thank you so much, Jenny. We got something to give you too. And there's something missing up here. We don't have nothing for Gina. I feel bad. How you doing? We also want to recognize uh Gina DeGenova. Gina, stand up. Gina, thank you. You kind of started when I started.
Yep.
Two thousand and five, somewhere along those lines. And Gina was there in many, many meetings uh with us on on legal matters and we always appreciated uh your tutelage and understanding the law and how you help us navigate. So we're gonna miss you. And I want to recognize you here. We don't have anything to give you.
That's okay.
And I will turn it over to you.
They work for retirements, that's why. You got the three retirements.
I I don't know.
I have thirteen more years to go. No, I really appreciate it. I mean, it's been it's been a really good run. I've been here almost twenty years. Um several different capacities, Assistant Prosecutor and then Chief Assistant under Paul Gaines. Um Public Information Officer and then as Prosecutor for a couple of years. So it's been it's been a very lovely run. Um I'm excited for the next chapter. So thank you.
Any one here on the Prosecutor's Staff that would like to say anything? What we have? Your comments? Not trying to put you on the spot. Anyone else in the crowd would like to say anything?
I would like to say something. I I was too upset when they first started. I would say, there's no crying in baseball. But now I would like to say, because I always have to ask Paul, I have to have the last word. But um but I have to say, it has been an honor and a pleasure to work um for the county for these years. I I you know, I came here as a young lawyer. Um and uh I really didn't even like the law anymore, because I worked for a private law firm. Didn't even know if I wanted to be a lawyer. And I started being a prosecutor and loved every minute of it. I used to I tell I also teach at Youngstown State. I tell my students, um I've been so lucky to have two jobs that I love so much. And and really what makes it a joy is the people.
Yes.
All of these people back here um that I've that I've worked with all the years, you know, who are not just my I'm not gonna cry, not just my colleagues, but my friends, all of you who have become that as well. I've seen many boards. I've been through many boards. Um but the one thing I can say, it was really it was an honor that Paul would trust me in the positions that he did and then Gina as well, watching her grow and become who she did. I mean, we have such amazing talented people in that office. I think I wish the next administration well. We're leaving a phenomenal office that has done phenomenal work with a great record. And I know that, you know, they will continue to do that and serve the people of Mahoney County, all the county officials, all the township officials. There isn't enough I can say about our office, the people, the prosecutors. And I am excited. I'm excited. It's different. It's gonna be different. I'm gonna go. I I told someone earlier, I used to always say, it's good to be the judge. Now I'm gonna find out. So but I want to say thank you to you. I mean, we've been together for a long time. And Audrey, oh my gosh, thank you so much. This county doesn't run without Audrey. Note to people. She needs a lot of backup in the I can't say it. I can't say enough words to all of you. You've just been so supportive of us. Everything we came to you that you want, that that you know, we we had ideas, you know, when we wanted to expand services, you were always there for us. And and that's really what this is. And I know I've heard you and Nancy, don't let me forget about Nancy and we've had a little private conversation the other day. Because I'm gonna miss all you guys so much. But I will tell you, and I know you've said it before, we are such a phenomenal team in Mahoney County. We have always worked together. We have always tried to do the right thing. And and you know, Paul gave me some really good, easy advice when he came um into office. Follow the law. And so if you do that, life gets easy. So um thank you all so much for everything. Thank all of you for everything. Thank you, Gina. And um I look forward, like Gina, to the next chapter. Well, the Commissioners should always end, so that's what I wanted I wanted to just say um and it's hard for me to
Don't you care? She said I gotta talk to you. I'm balling my eyes out.
You know, when I first came here
And Riley don't put that in the same
When I first came here and Gina was my first prosecutor before they put her over to Sheriff's Office and me and Nancy had fits. But you've always been stellar. You've always been there. You have always been able to answer the phone, pick up the phone and lead us in the right direction. And Lynette has been my right arm. I call her all the time. And she knows. I go like Lynette, da-da-da. And we figure out or I'll say, well, this is what I know. This is what you know. This is things and bring it together. And I thank you for the level of integrity that you guys have brought to the office. I thank you for that level of integrity for Tim and Lynette when we've dealt with so many different issues. And I appreciate that so much. And I am so happy that you guys continue with Mahoney County because Mahoney County needs you. And so I appreciate that. We look forward to new administration, but we appreciate what we had. And we know that it was good. And no matter what anybody else says, you guys are number one.
I can't even look at that. It's hard because Been around as long as I've in a different I started when you guys started in nineteen seventy. We went through some times. And I've got to say and Lynette, Nick, Gina I called them all hours of the day or night about health issues, mental health issues, legal issues with our department, things that we needed to get straightened out. And never one time didn't they answer the phone if even if it was half off the night. And that's respectful to both of us. And it's gonna be tough. But um we're all very tough. I mean, I grew up Brian Hill and um and we'll work it out. But I hope and pray that not only all of the departments have changed, along with Prosecutor's Office and everything, that we are able to move into a transition. And I believe we will be into a transition that's gonna be just as good as what we have in the learning process. I believe that's gonna happen. Because elections are funny animals. And and it's different. But different is what I came on many years ago was different. Different is now when Gina comes on, but and it ends up to be the same because we all end up trying to work together. But what we're here for is not us. We're here for two hundred and sixty-five thousand people. And you have done that with Prosecutor's Office. I won't miss you. But I also know we're gonna be, so I probably will be calling to see how everybody's feeling. And argue because everybody's been beaten. But it's been an honor to work with you guys. I mean, I came in and it was different. But as I worked through it, I felt my family.
You know, I I I I go bottom of all the same sentiments. Because the you know, it's even though for nineteen years it was part-time. As Township Trustee, I worked with all the people, predominantly that were in Prosecutor's Office as an Austin Township Trustee. And they were such such wealth of knowledge, cooperation. I can't tell you. I mean, I got elected in ninety-four, ninety-three, started in ninety-four in Austin. And when I went to work and started dealing with Prosecutor's Office, I mean, I was thirty-five years old and we were like out to reduce the water rates, get the gas tax allocation changed. We wanted to conquer the world, you know, get things done. I was always talking Prosecutor's Office, you know, and filed a lawsuit because, you know, it's un- it's unconstitutional how they designate the gaslighting tax, you know. How could, you know, not go by road miles, by rent to more than be satisfied, you know. And you know, and they had to like reel me in and say, well, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this. Say, even Gina, you know, we were how many times did, you know, what a spitfire she was when we were in there, you know, trying to pull liquor license on people that were, you know, building houses without permits, you know. Opening a bar and turning it into a uh brothel. All the things that we were trying to do to, you know, to make at the time Austin Town better and better. And you know, there's not that many other staff people that collectively, you know, whether it's Nick or Lynette, Tim, Gina, and all of the ladies in the back. You know, I mean, different amounts of years, different focuses. Um but always marching in the same direction. And I can tell you that that the twelve years that I've had here in the county working, you know, almost daily with them has been everyone marching in the same direction. You know, it's it's not it's not functional. It's not um productive unless you're moving together collectively. You know, if you're if you go one step forward and three steps back, you know, it it never benefits the people that were elected to serve. Three of us, you know, this isn't our seats. You know, belongs to, like like Carol said, two hundred and fifty thousand residents. You know, and and people come and go. The institution has to remain successful moving forward. And I can say to Lynette that, you know, I I learned so much more from you than I learned, you know, from a functional standpoint of what we do as a county. You know, just because of your your ethics, your morality, you know, and your integrity and the things you brought to the table along with everyone else. But you know, I learned about I I learned about books you have, you know, the adwords and she would remind me of our positions and where we stand in the world. And you know, and uh so many different things that that you stand for. And that, you know, I always I always harken back that you can teach people to be just about to do a lot of different jobs, a lot of different functions. But you can't teach people to be good people. You know, and and when you bring good people into positions, good things happen. You know, and I can say that every person, you know, Nick, Lynette, Tim, Gina, and everyone that's works as a team is leaving county a much better place than they found. And they added so much value to it. The thing the thing that happens is that you know, you make decisions every day, but you don't really know what you know. You know, because things that you've accumulated, whether through experience, through life, through your jobs, through working with all the different towns, cities, villages, you know, you know things that you don't realize that other people don't know. And you make decisions so easily. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you make the right decision. You know, and you know, it's been a privilege for me on, you know, the same avenues as, you know, three of you out there um that that it's it's been a great opportunity. We've got a great team of people. We have good people here coming in, you know. And we just keep moving forward. So I really thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the great things you've done for Mahoney County, for our communities, for people. You know, I I cry a lot just because I know so thank you so much.
We'd like to uh show these islands. We'd like our recipients to come up. Hey, you wanna go over here? Are we gonna face this way? You're gonna be hunting for me. I know it's part with with Pete. So you're gonna be you're gonna be looking for me.
What I want to say with our law department, our prosecutors have done for us. We haven't had an audit finding, thanks to them. We all like cooperative purchasing, thanks to them. You're gonna see on the agenda today many items for blanket POs, thanks to them. What has that done for us? Eliminated the need for multiple requisitions. Given us the authority to piggyback on cooperative purchasing. Saved a lot of time and a lot of red tape, thanks to the Prosecutor's Office. Way back, there wasn't cooperative purchasing as we know it today. Because of their research and and making it what it is today, it's become clockwork. There's so many POs we issue. There's no findings because they check. They've made it work. It's made it where we almost don't know how easy it's become because of them. So I want to thank all of them. Gina and I go way back. We used to run the Peace Race together. And I bet her we're gonna run again. I'll let her win.
I have a lot of I have a lot of practice. I haven't been running on the ground a lot over the last couple of
Gina, I'm gonna let you win no matter what. I'm gonna let her win. And I go back to Nick and his little office in this building and how he used to be accessible and you couldn't even get in the office with him. He would help us and how we moved here.
I was bigger than the office.
And you know what I like?
Remember my button, no change orders?
Yes. What I'd like to, they allowed me to disagree at times. And I know I'm not an attorney, but they let me express my opinion and appreciated it. So Lynette, Gina, Tim, Nick, like I said, thank all you guys. You made it easy for me to be successful.
Marty Looney, four nine three Bev Road Boardman. Um first off, for Gina and and Prosecutor's Office. Um you know, I kind of wear a lot of hats in the valley, you know, being on the Port Authority President of Building Trades, Business Manager for the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters and Mahoney County CIC, we go on and on. So it's all intertwined and and the cooperation that I've seen over the last few years has been just phenomenal. On behalf of the Building Trades, Gina, and your staff, I just wanted to say thank you. And we really appreciate what you have done for us over the last last couple of years. Um Mr. Ditzler, Commissioner Ditzler, I I can't say enough about um the friendship that you've had for us. Not only in business parts for the county, but on a personal level. And you've carried yourself with dignity and respect. And it didn't go unnoticed. And we sincerely appreciate the friendship over the years. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Are we uh alive? I just wanted to I wanted to take the time to uh thank all the Assistant Prosecutors and prosecuting attorneys for all their uh advice and counsel over the years. I especially wanted to uh give a shout out to Tim Tousick uh for his his wisdom. Uh his advice is is uh the fact that he gave me the crash course on why we do things in the district. Uh he was principal in negotiating the host agreement with Carbon Lime sodas. Generated millions of dollars in free services from Mahoney County. So I just want to thank them all and wish them well on the next leg of their journey.
Thank you. Last time. All right. Well we have in our midst with us today, we'd like to welcome uh Mayor Sebring, Mr. David Wright. And uh Mayor, we have a proclamation for you recognizing your village one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. And I'd like you to come up and introduce your staff and say what you'd like to say.
Thank you. Uh so we have our Village Manager, uh Tim Gabralsek, um and one of our council members, Nate Kaufman uh with us in attendance today. Uh we'd like to thank the Commissioners for this proclamation and recognizing our one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary uh on behalf of the Village residents and also the administration. Um it's a great honor be here today to accept that proclamation. Uh we look forward to another one hundred and twenty-five years, um long after most of us will be gone. But uh and also for your support over the years uh for the village. Uh Landbanks did a great job for us over the years. Uh we've taken down a lot of blight in our community as as the rest of the county has. And we just look forward to continuing to work work with you guys as as we move into the next chapter. Um I'm just completing my first year as the mayor. Um born and raised in the village of Sebring, uh left for about seven years, come back. I was a council member for twelve years, uh decided uh last year to run for mayor. Um so I'm looking forward to to moving Sebring in the in the next direction. As most of you may know, uh we are one of the furthest points in the western part of the county. I'll be nice today because we're here on a on the but sometimes we feel like we are forgotten out there. But sometimes I feel like we also don't ask enough when we need support. So I expect us to have some interesting meetings and try to try to get some additional support out in that end of the county. So again, thank you and we greatly appreciate it.
Can you come back up?
Yep.
We're gonna come to the mansion.
Yeah, I think it's for sale.
Wherever you want, that's okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Mayor, we'd like to present this to you on behalf of the board of county commissioners, recognizing one hundred and twenty-five years. We wish you one hundred and twenty-five more.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Karen.
Okay, absolutely. We greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, bring Anthony out to show him that beautiful mansion again. You've got shoes to fill. You know, with bike park, Ken, Jim Hart, and, you know, I've had to serve on a land bank for both of them for a lot of years. And, you know, and, and we were reminded all the time, you know, about where Sebring is and we had meetings, we had had meetings at Copeland and, you know, and, and go out and, you know, for water lines, for the China factory, uh, demolitions and, you know, different things that we participated with. And it's a great community. It's a hidden gem in Mahoney County. And, uh, but we, we, we do need, you know, to get there more often and, and, uh, you know, I, I ate, uh, can't remember that little breakfast joint I ate at when I was over there right in front of the property.
Royal star.
There you go. And, uh, so I gotta, I'll, I'll have more time to go out for breakfast. So definitely gonna come out there and that Sebring mansion, my goodness, I, you know, what a showpiece. I hope somebody other than the NFL teams that come in on, uh, you know, on, uh, on induction day, you know, stay there and I'd love to, I'd love to stay in a room there. I'll take my wife out there. When we used to make jokes, where are you going on vacation? Louisville Festival. Now I'm going to Sebring.
Thank you. Thank you.
Phil, may I have a quick story? When I was first elected, I ran in oh four to five, excuse me, in oh five. Mr. Luke was Mr. Five. And I never forget, he goes out, well, you're gonna come out with me tonight. We're going to a meeting in Sebring. I said, Sebring? I said, where the heck is that? So literally, you're, how do you let it know where it is? So forty-five minutes later, I'm up with you. And what a beautiful, I mean, I always said township, uh, it's just got a lot of history out there. And, uh, I thought I'd share that with you. Because you ask some people, unfortunately, they, they, they think it's an acronym.
Yes.
But thank you again.
Yep, thank you.
All right, well, we have to get into the business portion of our meeting. And Carol, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion for the approval of the previous minutes for meeting number forty-eight, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and critical bill.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy? Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes, Journal entry.
Motion for the approval of Journal entry number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes, Travis, A V, County Courts.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to thank them for all the high review. I had a lot of questions. A is for, uh, travel for the county court judges for required P L E, D L M, various seminars that's not prepared to you release between your heart and eyes. Oh, B is for the county court probation staff who is retired, feels in the hours.
Carol?
Motion for the approval of the number two travels, A, D, and B.
Second, roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes, agreements, letters A through H, and we will begin with purchasing, Mr. Fortunato.
Number A is, um, agreeing with the District Board of Health Office for space at fifty Wester, Westchester Drive for Building Inspection and Planning Commission Departments in an amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars each.
Thank you. Facilities out.
Morning Commissioners. B is an agreement with M J D Excavating for the Bev Road Composting Storage Structure Project in the estimated amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, non-general.
Thank you, Alan. And C and D, Jobs and Family, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, item C is an agreement with Elm Tree Catering Inc. for catering services for an employee appreciation day. Um, our employees earned incentives from the state based on their performance, and we wanted to recognize their efforts with an appreciation day. Uh, so this agreement's for three thousand eighty-one dollars and is non-general. Um, item D is an agreement, uh, with Loving Hands Home Care LLC, doing business as Loving Hands Transport, to provide non-emergency transportation for our Medicaid eligible clients to attend medical appointments. The agreement is per unit pricing and is non-general.
Thank you, Tom.
Led, Mr. Curry, good morning Commissioners. Uh, letter E is an agreement with Foundations for the Future LLC for the House of Control and Healthy Homes Work at one oh six West Philadelphia, around twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, F is an agreement with Foundations for the Future LLC for the same type of work at six oh six Dewey in an amount of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And G is an agreement with all heating and cooling, uh, for HVAC services in our chip and lead, uh, program, uh, projects, uh, uh, in the amount of up to seventy-five thousand, all three of them.
And our treasurer, Mr. Daniel.
Morning, everyone, and everyone that's here. This, uh, I'm asking you to approve an agreement with Autoagent Data Solutions. Uh, this will be for electronic payment processing. Uh, our office already offers electronic payment processing. This is going to increase some of those services so taxpayers can pay online. They can pay from their phone. They can use Apple Pay, Google, Google Pay, all these things that I don't know how to use. But it's, uh, uh, designed, you know, no one likes to pay taxes, but this is designed to make payment of taxes easier for, for the taxpayer. Uh, Autoagent is a company that we've been doing business with since about twenty fifteen. Uh, current, they currently provide, uh, payment services with escrow payments for us, and we're very pleased with the service they provide. So we're really looking forward to this relationship, increasing our relationship with them. And also, as part of this agreement, the transaction fees that are charged to the taxpayer uh, for these types of payments are going to be reduced from what they are now. So we're going to be able to provide more and better services at less cost to the taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, yeah. Okay, motion?
Motion for the approval of number three, Agreement State Through H.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Change orders for A, Alan.
A is change order number one with SOS Security Systems Incorporated for additional motions center in the amount of one hundred and sixty dollars, general.
Motion for the approval of number four change orders, A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes, five A appointments. You're reappointing the following individuals to serve with Mahoney County Planning Commission Board. Effective chair in one twenty twenty-five for three years, that's Mr. Robert Lyle, Scott Timmarucci Senior, and Lou Zarlinga. Is there anybody, uh, here or on a screen? I'll ask for a moment.
Motion for the approval of number five, point six A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy? Trafficante?
Yes, Revolution?
Motion for the approval of number one, legislation sufficient.
Second, roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes. Record of bids, two A, Mr. Genetic.
Morning, everybody. Uh, letter two A is the record of bids for the Mahoning Guardrail Contract, which is funded through C E A O for fiscal year twenty-five.
Thanks, Pat. Motion?
For the record, uh, number two, record of bids, A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Sure. Pat?
You say yes.
I said yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, God, I wanted to talk to you something on Glenswood Avenue, and I couldn't wait. Thank you for that. Pat, Glenswood, that was the best decision ever. A bike trail in the middle of, of Glenswood Avenue. I don't know where the cars would go. They'd have to be air flighted over. But that was very good. Thank you. And the residents that I met with probably would be thanking me on, on their own shortly after they read.
Okay, now we move on to resolutions. Let us take through him. And we have Lucas today, the newly elected county reporter, Mr. Richard Scarsella. And this is a resolution to fill a vacancy for the office of Mahoney County Reporter. Orders for how we like, those sections three oh five point oh two, Scarsella, if you're prepared to say anything.
Well, thank you Commissioners. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Marlin Palermo for, uh, agreeing to remain as my chief deputy. I told her she can stay as a mom as she wants. We have a good working relationship and I want you all to know that she's been here fifty years. She's not ready to leave yet, she told me. Uh, I look forward to, uh, joining the team. I've been here every day and I feel very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, letter. Letter D, Commissioners, Resolution, we're adopting the twenty twenty-five holiday schedule. And then letter C, uh, O and B, Jen.
This is a resolution to transfer funds from the General Fund to the Dog Warden Fund in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. And continuing with Carol, letter D, Colleen.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning Commissioners Nancy and Audrey. Um, this is a resolution proclaiming December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day. December twenty-first is the winter solstice and the longest night of the year. Um, it has traditionally been designated as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day by the National Coalition for Homelessness. Um, and it is a day that is recognized across the country. Um, it is meant to be a solemn day that serves as a moment for collective reflection, memorial, and a renewed commitment to ending homelessness and preventing the needless deaths caused by, caused by lack of housing.
Thank you. Very important. And Commissioner Rivers, negative.
Good morning. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing a sponsorship fund in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the Ohio Athletic for their March Ohio State wrestling championships. This has held two consecutive weekends in March, brings over ten thousand practices in the weekend, and it sells out majority of our hotel rooms for those two, so it's very event.
And number seven, data, Phil, Commissioners, uh, the data processing department is requesting a full loan purchase of over seventy-five thousand dollars through various state of Ohio S T S Sourcewell and or G S A contracts. This would include supplies, computer data, voice, networking hardware, software, camera, and video supplies and other services. Thank you very much. All right, E M A?
We're the commissioners.
One chief.
Yeah. Uh, this is a moral obligation for ten thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Being in Poland, uh, these are emergency sire repairs. It's actually the radio repair, the figure of sirens that can be made.
Grants management, Anna?
Morning Commissioners. This is a resolution approving the addendums and modifications to the following agencies funded by the American Rescue Plan Act as follows. The Emergency Management Agency is having a final commitment to the Mahoney, uh, to the Mobile Command Post in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Y S U had a previous agreement for, uh, training and they are going to have a scope change and create a drone certification program at the Y S U Police Academy. Uh, the Emergency Management Agency was part of the, um, active shooter training that Y S U had put on. And, um, they had purchased shields for, um, uh, one to two shields for every department in Mahoney County. And, um, the cost of that came in under the original allocated amount and the final cost for those shields was sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Um, Commissioners had, uh, you know, varying amounts of money left at the end of, um, the forty-four million dollars. And, um, with those funds, you've chosen today to support action in the mobile food market uh, with an additional seventy-five thousand dollars. And for domestic relations, this is a deduct from your original, um, allocation for personnel. Uh, out of the six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, they ended up using five hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents.
Thank you. A lot. Thank you. Led, Phil?
This is a moral obligation payment of thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars to W W Construction for chip rehab work at five eighty-one.
Sure. Purchasing, Mr. Fortunato.
Before I get to the explanation of that, I've got to give my thanks again to the prosecutor's office. As you go back to what Dad just had you review, it's because of the prosecutor's office knowing about and researching Ohio Revised Code nine point four eight, which is joint purchasing programs. All these you see coming up that are blanket POs that put us within the law that we're piggybacking on. It's because of their research allowing this to happen. And it's made everything so easy now in compliance with the higher revised code. So I want to thank them again. It's become so easy, but the research to make it easy is because of our prosecutor's office. Uh, going on to mine, uh, office supplies. Boy, that's the one, if something isn't delivered on time, it's the most concerned one because everyone uses office supplies. And we use staples to cooperative purchasing for office supplies, janitorial and furniture. Moving on to the next one, uh, over ten of our departments, uh, either lease or use the services of Pitney Bowls. And this allows us to have economy of scale in reducing our mail costs.
Thank you, Jim. You're welcome. And sanitary, Mr. Genetic?
Commissioners, letter L is a resolution to provide for the required debt service coverage annually through revenues generated by a new schedule of rates for sanitary sewer service to include the fixed monthly rates for all customers of the Mahoney County Metropolitan Sewer District and expand cost-saving programs by modifying and establishing criteria for customers.
Thank you, Pat. And veteran service?
Good morning Commissioners Audrey and Nancy. Uh, this is a resolution of necessity to purchase one uh, twenty twenty-four Ford Transit fourteen passenger bus uh, from the American Bus and Accessories in the estimated amount of ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. And I'd also like to piggyback off of the, uh, congratulations to the prosecutor's office. They've educated me a ton on contracts and everything else, and I appreciate their time and professionalism and wish them the best of luck in the next chapter of their lives.
Thanks. Thank you. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number three resolutions, A through L.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes. And for the good and worthy elected officials of the Department of Heads, like the Congress. Phil, if I'm still here, I would, uh, maybe a few words. When I came here in two thousand and five, uh, Tim was one of the first people that, uh, my predecessor introduced me to. I just want to kind of quantify what he's meant. We're a small spoken wheel of government. Um, and with the announcement of the new grant that we just got, um, since two thousand and five, we brought, uh, just over thirty million dollars in, in grant funds. From the beginning of the program, it's approaching forty million. When you count the, uh,
From the beginning of the program, it's approaching forty million. When you count the, uh, local match um, that has been contributed to those grants as well, we're approaching sixty million. Uh, and Tim's signature or initials, uh, we would met and the rest of the prosecutor's office that we've used over the years. His initials are on every single M O U contract, uh, uh, under memory, memorandum of understanding, every every document that has come through this board, uh, Tim's name on it. And on top of that, um, over the last twenty years, nineteen years, um, he's been a good friend to me as well. Our, our son went to the Marines uh, within a month of each other. Uh, so we've knocked ideas and concerns in thirteen weeks of desolate silence uh, together when they were at basic training. Uh, and I just want to thank you and, and all the other people that, that touched our, you know, our program and us personally as well. I don't know if we should let you hear that. That's, uh, that's good in a nutshell. We did. It's not public yet.
Okay.
Uh, I haven't seen it come yet, so.
Alright, let us know.
I'm gonna be mums, but it is, it is in the area of a million. For, for Campbell's brothers and, and Mahoney County, but I haven't been released yet publicly, so I didn't say what.
My grant money, God, for us over the years, it's amazing. It's a lot. It's amazing. Such a smart guy. Yeah.
And the rest of my staff, actually, they all wanted to come.
Everybody were here?
They, uh, I don't think anybody else knew it, but they all, they all, uh, made sure that I stopped in the, they stopped in my office today. And, uh, I know some of them are gonna call you personally, I see you in the afternoon. New grad, nobody knows who you are, but they, they know your name enough to know, uh, that they were, uh, this hard when, uh, you come back.
Thanks, Phil. We appreciate it. Anyone else? Screen?
Any else? Norlyn?
Yes.
The reason why we're doing the resolution today. Um, can I say that?
Oh, sure.
Norlyn is retiring effective the thirty-first of December, thirty, thirty-first.
Yes.
And so I think you should say something. Norlyn has been the county recorder and in that office for how many?
Fifty. I've been recorder since two thousand and eight. But I started when I was about six. I was a deputy recorder.
You and Carol started together.
We didn't walk here, Dave.
Who started?
Seventy-four, October first.
Started in Sep- April. I started in the time you picture, seventy-four.
Me? I, I was deputy recorder, then under Mister Papalia, he may be administrative assistant. And then when Mister Gerberi left, I went for the appointment. I've been recorder since two thousand and eight. Yes, you did. And I've enjoyed every single second of it.
Yeah.
I really have. Well, thank you. That's right. You were, you were the, no, Lisa, yeah.
Norlyn, she, she brought, where we would register the veterans, you brought that forward and everything.
Yes, veteran ID, um, cards. We love our veterans. We really do.
And then through the ARPA funds, Commissioners, we're able to do some upgrade up to
Rights, Act, and
Mister Castle. So as on behalf of the county, do appreciate all of your services you've done.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure. It really has.
And it's been a pleasure working with you too. I think everybody in this office, and I think we all need to give you a standing ovation.
I appreciate it.
We'll go.
Don't dance away too soon, you know, it's not thirty-first. Today's only the nineteenth. You know, you've still got work to do.
I know.
We've got, we've got one more meeting. I've got one more Christmas tied up.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I expect you to be here for the last meeting.
Yes, I will be here just because you asked.
And that's on the thirtieth.
Okay.
I have something to say.
Thank you.
Um, Lou had to hop off. I just wanted to draw attention to our Christmas tree over here.
Yeah.
Um, and look at all the great decorations. This was something that the committee did uh, with, they partnered with some local classrooms to make the decorations out of all recycled materials. So it's pretty cool up there. And then they're going to, uh, award one of the classrooms a no waste pizza party um, for all the great decorations that they gave us.
And I actually asked Lou if he would bring, if the kids could come down here and see the tree and take pictures. So he's supposed to check down and school the students. That would give me kids care of the future. Every year.
Yeah, they're pretty good. Wish I could decorate like that.
Alright.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Public hearing, I love it.
Yeah. We have public hearing.
Just congratulations, thank you. And, uh, we won't have another meeting before Christmas, will we? We don't have another.
No, not another one before Christmas.
You know, please make sure you're, you know, going to the giving tree and giving a name with, you know, helping somebody who has fortune than us. Sad things they ask for, they're just necessities in most cases that we take for granted. You know, so please, there's so many people that are less fortunate than everyone in this room. And, uh, try to help. We have the ability to, so. It's still for the holiday season and all year long. And thank you for all your great work. Merry Christmas. I echo everybody's sentiments. Merry Christmas. Okay, everybody, remember those who are less fortunate. Uh, we are, it's a tough time, a lot of emotions this year. Families who've lost loved ones, those people who are just trying to keep a roof over their head. So I wish all of you families a very merry Christmas. Next meeting?
It's gonna be Monday, December thirtieth.
Thirty. Okay. That emotion for you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remiderigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Thank you, everyone.